... Meeting to order. Steve.
I pledge the allegiance of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, has everybody got a chance to read the minutes of the previous meeting? Is there any corrections or additions? Moved and seconded. Moved. Well, seconded.
Seconded.
Moved and seconded and approved the minutes of the first meeting. All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion passed. Any requests to be out of state between now and the 17th?
Do you want to be gone, the 12th through the 17th?
12th through the 17th.
Eighteenth.
Just me, 12th through the 17th.
We're saying, you were correcting us, you were saying today's.
Oh, you corrected it, so.
No, okay.
Move to approve Mark's request.
One second.
Any discussion?
Is there any more comments today?
Just no discussion.
All those in favor, let Mark out of state.
Aye.
Aye.
Okay.
I was just trying to remember if I was leaving the state or not, but I'm not this year. Okay.
No one?
Hey Jill, will you turn on the recording?
Ah, I guess I'm muted.
Thanks, Joan.
These are the ones that gotta remember when you said it already.
Mark's going out of state. Mark's going out of state, I got that part.
Ah, we don't have any unfinished business. New business, I think the application in here from the swimming team to restrict traffic on First Avenue by the swimming pool. I'm not so sure they could almost.
Yeah. They're right before the sealers.
Oh, they're in the back?
Yep.
I'm not so sure they're gonna disclose this creed actually for the day, but this is what they wanted, so.
You're not sure what?
They wanna, they're just closing from seven thirty in the morning till three eight for both days instead of just the whole day.
So.
So, I see two X's for yes and no.
Yeah. I see that kinda looks like they tried to cross.
Well, I think they said no until they realized they needed to, so then they contacted those people and then.
And then it says five, no, five, okay.
Yeah.
I would move to approve this application.
Second.
Moved and seconded, is there any discussion? All those in favor of the application for the street, the swimming team?
Aye.
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Okay, discussion on market pricing for recycling. I think you'll see in here, there's a letter from Seal Steel, et cetera. They will no longer be paying us anything for our cardboard, but they will keep picking it up, which is, at least we're getting rid of it.
You don't, so there's a place to collect it and.
Place to collect it.
And we're not paying them to.
Exactly.
Right, them to take it.
Not yet.
It was nice when we were getting those nice checks every month from them, that's helping with our garbage situation, but not much we can do at this point.
So, out of curiosity is, I mean, is there anyone else that does anything?
Kind of J R D E is in the same position that we are, that was in their minutes.
Of, with still, et cetera?
With whoever they're working with, they're not getting, they're not.
They're not getting any either.
Well, it used to all go on a semi and go west, and then that quit, and then, yeah, so we were on our second or third iteration of people taking cardboard.
We used to get upwards of twenty thousand dollars a year, that was a big help to garbage rates that we're not getting anymore.
But it all got shipped to the coast and broken down and repult and put back into cardboard, and now it's not.
Well, awesome.
Okay.
We are still getting minimal amounts for aluminum and iron.
Minimal.
Minimal.
So, really, kind of the reason we put this on here, just put it in your think tank, we've got to look at our garbage rates. Or at the point, we're going to have to raise them, we're not keeping up, so.
And just for a refresher, what's our current rate for one, oh, we've got, what, a sixty-five gallon can?
It's ninety-five gallon can.
Ninety-five.
Ninety-five.
That's wide.
Eight fifty-seven or six forty-three, and that's a month.
And just, when we looked at it, was it two years ago that we talked about this? Municipalities our size, we were low then, and that was two years ago.
Do we have any idea where a comparable city would be for garbage rates?
Um, I, I, I've just barely started looking at the research, I just know where we're at and what we need to be at, so.
What were they again, Joey?
Eight fifty-seven or six forty-three.
So, that's just.
And that's your residential unit.
That's just to pick it up in town and take it up on the hill.
Yeah.
There's some other towns, they have it all, because your landfill is on your taxes.
Right. Right, yeah.
So, we'll have something to remember to try and compare prices.
And that's for a month.
Right.
Yeah. And you wanna phase out the smaller containers, right, just because they're heavy?
It would be easier from our standpoint, because we don't have to stock one size container, it just, it'd cost less.
Well, and if somebody wants a small one and we don't have one, we have to order one, right?
Well, right now we have some.
Okay.
You know, we didn't order any small ones last time we bought.
We had quite a few of the sixty-fives, we ran out of the ninety-five.
Okay.
So, that's kind of a point. When Joey comes up with some figures, what we're gonna, what it's gonna take, we'll have to.
Through the process.
Going through the process.
And just as a quick refresher, how, is it like first reading, second reading kinda thing?
Yeah, mail, there'll be a mailing out to all residents, they, it's first reading, second reading, there's mailing, it, it's quite a process.
Gotcha.
And then there's public hearing, and then, so, it takes about six weeks, and then it's, it takes, it'll be thirty days before, after that, before the rates go into effect.
So, the numbers we have now are eight fifty-seven and six forty-three, I mean, those seem like pretty specific versus like, you know, six bucks and eight bucks, or you know what I'm saying?
And you know what, I'll be really honest with you, the last time we raised them was two thousand and six, I was not here.
Oh, okay.
So.
Those just seem like weird numbers, you'd think it'd be like eight fifty or something.
I think that they figured costs and, and went off of that.
Okay.
You know, I, you know, our base rate for water is twenty-two eighty-eight, so, you know, it's kinda, it depends, and at that point, we had a loan in.
Okay.
In garbage, but I can't answer that question.
Okay.
Okay, all right, it's up to you. You're up.
Oh, it's been a while since I've done this.
You're right.
Um, hi.
How are you?
Hi, guys. Um, first of all, does anyone have any questions? Or you, like, that they, maybe, yeah.
How did it go last year?
Yeah, I was gonna say, what's your gonna tell us, how'd it go last year?
Well, like, just like from your observation and wondering something, or like, um, it was good, oh, yeah.
How, how much fruit that.
I didn't weigh anything last year, that's something I would like to try and do this year, um, if possible, um, we produced a lot, we did a lot of potatoes, um, so I'd like to do weed this year, because I think we thought about it, a tonnage, I don't know.
So, did you have, like, how many participants did you have, and then where did the food go?
We didn't have really any participants, um, we grew beans, peas, onions, potatoes, tomatoes, carrots, beets, radishes, some hours, but stuff like that, uh, yeah, squash. It was hard to get rid of stuff, other programs, so this year I wanna give half of it to the public school cafeteria, and I was, and I wanted to try and get a grant under the, the.
The farmer's school.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Farmer's School program, and that would help run the garden more, be more self-sufficient. We're still open, I still want it to be open to the community, I had classes I wanted to start last year, and it was just, one of the things I didn't, I had a list of things that I wanted to do and, you know, and somebody to get done, um, like child education classes, free, just familiar, you know, food, I don't know. I don't know what to say, I'm really, I've been really busy, this, I was getting fed for this, um.
Well, so was it just you and?
Yeah, it was mostly just, it was a few of us, um.
There's been a few though?
Like, three or four of you.
Was it Kathy?
Yeah, they, Kathy and Mitch, Griffiths, me and Nathan, um, we had a couple people here and there, and we had a few people stop by, um, and we had donated, like, the, um, front ring supply donated potatoes last year and this year, um, so we wanna put a thank you in the account of recognizing businesses and stuffs, so that maybe more community members might wanna come in more, um, we had someone working on a sign last year that didn't get done for some reason unknown, so we're working on having someone else get a sign up for us, so it's clear for people, we have a bulletin board we're gonna put up, so there's more information for people, um, just tough because it's the first year, so getting it out there, but we produced a lot, and we gave a lot of produce away, and there was a lot of people that enjoyed it, um.
So, how did you figure that out, like, how to do that, I mean, how.
How did you distribute it?
Um, basically, anyone I met, I just ask, I'm gonna be walking down the street with my kids, and they'll be like, oh, cute kids, and I'm like, do you like some zucchini?
You start looking for, I'm on cars for.
No.
Plug your ears, Austin?
No, I, I've heard horror stories about that, but I won't put any people's vehicles, because.
Put it on the windshield.
Wrong, yeah.
Yeah.
Um, I put it out to churches, I put it out to people that if they knew anyone, I, I'm looking for, um, underclass or just average.
People I need.
Yeah, but I didn't necessarily direct it towards the food pantry, because Linda said that she didn't need it necessarily, and it's not certified, and they have the hood rights that bring a lot of produce there, so, first, I don't wanna look for people that need it, but don't go to the food pantry and stuff, it was just.
Or word them out.
Yeah, um.
Are you gonna see the news center?
Yeah, I can drop some off at the senior center, I should bring some to, like, the B, the nursing, the retirement home, I'm gonna give more to the churches this year,
What help do you, what are you looking for? Watering?
Um, I need, I need people to help pick weeds in rocks, and maybe some people to help, um, tighten up the fence. Um, and finish planting.
So, I don't remember off the top of my head, we put in a riser there, or there was a riser there?
No, last year we just ran it off the hydrant.
And did we do the same thing this year?
Uh, no, we've got the parts to put in the water line now.
Gotcha. Okay, and then did we?
Get it in.
Did we donate the water, was that what, what we did last year? No?
Yeah.
Yes.
Yeah, we did.
And I don't think we used that much, the, the meter that ended up getting put on, or take, yeah, it was on beginning, I watched, and it really.
We put a meter on the beginning and then we took it off for.
Yeah, I don't know how fast they move, or that particular one, but it really.
Water for the fire one.
I can't remember.
Just curious, I was just curious how the water side worked out, was my question.
And we're, we're open to.
We had, we had a meter on it, so we knew what was running through it, right?
For a while, but then, I can't remember right now, but we had, we were selling water to, somebody came in with big trucks, wanted to buy water, and that's our only meter, so.
So, you used it for.
We swapped it out.
Okay.
If you have a number of gallons that was ran through that in the time.
I, I can look back.
No, I mean, if you noted, if you did, I would, wouldn't mind noting that.
Oh, yeah, I bet.
Anybody else got any questions?
So, was this, that was, I'm sorry, a discussion and a vote? So, I would make the motion that we renew the contract for another year?
I would second that.
It's moved and seconded that we renew the contract on the community garden for one month a year, any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, you guys.
Motion is approved.
Thanks for your hard work out there.
Yeah.
Thanks. And if you guys want anything, let me know. Or if there's a particular vegetable you want, and, I'm open to it.
Okay.
I would agree.
Yeah, I would agree.
You noticed in your package, you have resolution number eight thirty-six, analogy, Joey Rogers, financial officer from City of Shiloh, recipient of lifetime achievement award from Montana Municipal Cliffs, treasures and finance officers.
Hey Joey, wanna read that for us?
Uh-uh.
Joey's still in front of that.
Do you wanna come to the podium?
No. I sat down when I got the award.
Right.
They had to read it without me. It was, it's an honor, it, it's, um, I was given this by my peers, and that means a lot.
Well, and it got brought up in our meeting last week, what a big deal it was as well.
It, 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 it.
I just wanna make sure that you recognize that this doesn't mean that you can leave anyway.
Well, it's a lifetime achievement.
Like I said, they just, they really give you one, that's all that means.
What they're saying is that you have achieved in ten years what it takes some people a lifetime to achieve.
Yeah.
And one of these days, she's gonna put it on her wall.
Do you need validation for parking?
You can come in.
Sure.
Can I say this, am I too late?
No.
No?
Can you put at least the hydrant access back on here soon, like, this weekend?
I bet.
Well, Steve was gonna make a motion.
I sure was, I moved that we approve resolution number eight thirty-six.
I think. I had two fingers.
You had tomorrow.
You had Stuart.
I was messing with him because that sounds, go ahead, Stuart.
They moved and seconded, we approved resolution eight thirty-six, any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Everybody had a chance to split the claims?
Yep.
Any questions on the claims?
I did learn that we have sprinklers system over the park that we pay electricity for, I didn't realize that.
The mini park.
The mini parks anymore, yeah.
Yeah?
I, that we approve the claims.
Second.
Moved and seconded and approved the claims, any more discussion on them? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. You notice I just gotta get on the game all the time?
I tried.
Okay, reports, Austin said he's been so busy, he hasn't had a chance to give a report.
Sorry, no worries, I've been busy, that's all I can really say.
That's good.
Yeah, I mean, it's, you know, summertime, things are picking up.
Yeah.
We're getting more, doing more traffic stops, getting more crimes, uh, that's whatever, um, but we are, we're picking up, we're holding on.
Well, I stood at the, the four-way stop there for a minute, waiting across and stuff, and I think one out of three out-of-state license plates just, it's probably a pretty common.
Yeah, and we did try to get that, um, as soon as we can, so.
Now, twenty places at once?
We tried.
Stop the motorhome was going down.
Just, just to occupy it.
I couldn't believe all the stuff was on there, there was like two motorhomes going down now.
I sat there for ten minutes the other day, and there were two, and then there were four horse trailers, and then there were two more RVs.
I think we, maybe they detoured some, whatever, not much we're gonna do about it. Okay, Mike, Public Works Director.
I was gonna report.
Yep.
And probably full mistakes, because I just got it done, um, we got a lot of water coming in sewer plant, as you can well imagine, uh, we weren't able to even get an estimate from last Friday, uh, was our last one until yesterday, I think we got one, yeah, so the peak on there is just based on past experience and looking at it, but.
Was that two million gallons?
Yeah. Yeah, that call it a solid two, um, it's coming down, that's good, um, everything else at the plant has been working good, um, so other than having to bypass to Lagoon, and we are discharging from Lagoon, um, everything out there is business as usual, um, I did put in a summary of all of our Lagoon discharges, and I know it's a lot of information, but I feel like, um, its information needs to be out there, so I wanted all you guys to have it, um, and it has gallons per minute per day, um, total daily flows, I also put in cubic feet per second, because that's a number that people are more used to dealing with, I think, and then our lab results on those discharges, um, and I put our current limits on the bottom, and, um, there are other limits that these numbers could violate, but right now I don't believe any more, and that's in our pounds per day total, which is a function of the volume we discharge too, so, um, the stuff that got reported last week, or last meeting, that is wrong out there, we're still waiting on the flow meter for the inflow lift station, I expect it to be here any day, um, we did get the, the digital card installed in the lift station, so the VFD's working properly on all the pumps, um, we've only got one sample back since our last meeting, and it was very good, you can see there, um, that we're, those are good results, as good as you get, uh, this new camera arrived, we had our training on it today, um, that went really good, um, I think it's gonna be a really valuable tool, we're gonna have it out tomorrow, um.
Pretty easy to use?
Um, it's really easy, it's, it's pretty user-friendly, um, it's a very technological device that you put into a very hostile environment, so it's, uh, operation, correct operation's gonna be key.
It was built for Mars and they use it in the sewers?
Um, it's, it's pretty much sealed up, yeah, um, it's, it's pretty neat, and if anybody wants to take a look at it, see how it works sometime, come down, we'll show you, um, and, uh, da-da-da-da, that's it on the sewer stuff, um, I was gonna say, you know, we had a pretty significant flooding event on the Teton and outside of the sewer plant, and, um, it really didn't affect how much, we had one spot on Foster Road where the water was coming east, um, Dan came out, we looked at it, we did a little bit of something there to mitigate that, I am gonna, I brought it up to Paul Wick last year when it became apparent, because that water comes right behind the Rickam Water Plant, and it's like the worst place we want, um, and I, I brought that to Paul Wick's ditch at the county last year, um, he, at the time, he suggested I follow up and talk to commissioners, and I didn't do it, um, this year we're gonna follow up on that and try to come up with a fix out there to get, to not let that water come so far east during high water events, um, water system, um, everything, tests are coming back good, water, we're starting to put more water, people are watering their yards more, we got a date for the valve replacement on the tanks, we're gonna start it next week on Monday, the tenth, um, everything's, seems to be falling in place for that project.
And how long did you say that would be? Couple days?
Well, I've, I've got, I've got the whole week blocked out for it, um, I'm hoping that the actual time that we have to isolate the tanks is eight hours or less, um.
And then, I think you mentioned there might be a disruption in service with.
There'll be a disruption in services for the country club, the airport, the county shop, and some of the folks, uh, and I don't know who's all hooked to this one water line that comes off the hill, I know Ru Lanzar and the old country shop, and we're notifying those people.
Okay.
I'm hoping that we can keep the actual isolation, it takes down to about three hours.
Okay, cool.
We'll see, um, we're putting a VFD on one of the pumps this week yet, that'll allow us to basically maintain water pressure on the whole system while we turn the tanks off, so. Uh, streets, um, we got two more of the railroad crossings out, so the three crossings that we had, the green light to get rid of are gone.
Cool, well done.
And it's nice, yeah, thank you.
And hopefully we'll get those chipped sealed this summer, at least for sure that one over there, um, and we're getting back to auto patching, um, the weather didn't help with that, I included at the back of this a draft map of what we hope to chip seal in July or August of the summer, um, and a kind of a rough budget, um, we have about a hundred and forty thousand dollars to chip seal this summer, and that's using twenty eighteen May and twenty nineteen, no, twenty nineteen to twenty twenty, um, on those streets around that map, you can see that accounts for about a hundred and seventeen thousand dollars, the other twenty-two, uh, we'll either add streets, or I think, given how bad things are, we could probably spend that money just doing spot chip sealing over these bad areas, and, and this is a draft, um, I would like to hear any comments or criticisms or whatever.
And you can see just on the south side, I mean, those are, that's exactly the places that I would have suggested.
So, take a look at it and drive around, see what you think, see if we're hitting the spots we need to, and, and, um, that's, oh, and then, we did, we started the sidewalk project on seventh, on, technically on Monday, they broke dirt today, um, we finished moving the four trees that were left to be moved today, we had a tree spade come in, so we kept, the trees are still on seagrass, um, and so that was good.
Where'd you go with those trees?
And we put, two of them were those two big ash blew down last year, and.
Oh, like, in front of fields?
Yeah, that's.
First Avenue, right there.
Yeah.
And, um, we put one, we had, there was a tree growing at the baseball field, kinda behind home plate on Field Three, and like, two years ago, a deer got it and rubbed his hand with it on it, um, so we put a pretty good-sized tree in there, um, I think it's gonna be nice, kind of, it made instant shade, right there where the bench is, yeah, and then, we had one, uh, mountain ash that we replaced a tree in the campground area that had been badly disfigured, um, I don't know whether it got mowed over or deer or both, but it was about, it was more of a shrub, so, we replaced it with a nice tree, um, we've had a lot of work facilitating the fiber optic project, and, um, overall, I think it's going pretty good, um, like I said last meeting, alleys are gonna be tough, you know, as soon as they say they're done with an alley, we're gonna go down through it, and working with them, they're gonna buy, hopefully, the agreement we're, tend to be set up is that they'll buy extra material, and we'll just grade it and roll it, and hopefully wind up with nicer alleys and, I'm sorry.
And what's the timetable on that, roll around, I'll cover, I see.
Well, yeah, but I think, like, I think this alley that runs between first and second, will probably be done, they'll be out of it, uh, possibly in a week or two, and as soon as they give me the green light and say, okay, we're buying gravel, then we're gonna try to get to, we're not gonna wait until October and then have the whole dang town to do, we're gonna try and stay right behind it.
Good. Their residents will appreciate that too.
Our residents will appreciate that too.
Well, it's just tough, we get more moisture.
Yes.
As you can probably have noticed, they don't hold up well after they've been dug into.
So do you, um, do you know if it's one of those things where they do the whole city and then they turn it on live or it's live as soon as they connect each?
No, I agree. I'm still...
I can answer that.
Yeah.
Um, at the public meeting that they had, the library before they started, they said that they will do the entire installation project. And then there is a bunch of telecommunications engineering tests that have to be done to make sure that the system's actually going to work. And they're not going to be kind of people who go onto the new system until sometime next spring.
Oh, okay. Thank you, ma'am.
There's a period of time in there when, when it's not going to happen.
But there's not gonna be disruption in service in the meantime?
There'll be no disruption in service as far as I'm, I've been told.
Uh, what, what I've heard from other places that have gone through that is it actually will probably be a twenty-four to forty-eight hour disruption service.
But it's not on business, it's not...
No. No. No, some, some places were out, um, was it Ennis that they did? That there was a, there were a couple hours that were out in forty-eight hours. But that was, that was the longest that anybody had any disruption in service.
Yeah, there was stuff north of town, I mean, almost to the border.
No, and most, most places don't.
Yeah. Um, Mike, my other question is that sidewalk project in front of the school all the way up to Seventh Street?
Yeah.
Uh, what's their timetable on that?
July eighth, if, if we, if we have perfect weather, July eighth is our...
Gotcha.
What's that? But I think that's when it's supposed to be done. If we get weather, then that will extend out.
I mean, I guess my other question is, I know it's on your, uh, planning schedule and it's weather-dependent, but, um, the playground?
Yeah, I'm, I'm kinda waiting for, uh, an order on that, right? I saw the site out of mine and someone said...
Well, I don't know if that's something we need to, to do or what, where we're at on that.
Right, that's what I mean. Glenn was supposed to get back to me. He has, I'm gonna have to call him tomorrow to see.
I just saw our timetable was June thirtieth.
It's all laying right here. It's gonna take somebody who's fairly smart to know where all the concrete has to be put and around that.
Make it if you got money.
Yeah, that's right, 'cause I went to the Blue Princes at their... But...
Well, I was just bringing you up because of that June thirtieth, there was our, sort of our...
Wow, we're hoping for that.
Okay.
That's kinda where we said my city is here.
She's already, already been done.
She did awesome.
She did.
Yeah.
Sorry.
Thanks, Dan.
Mike, can I distribute this to the public?
Yep.
Um, yeah, it's draft.
Yeah.
You know, yeah.
Well, I forgot some.
Sure.
Okay.
Cool, thank you.
Um, we talked about the three manholes that you're getting slip lined. Do we, so we're working on funding for that, right?
We won't do, we'll do that in the budget for next year.
Okay.
Or, I mean, next, it's, we, so it'll be after July.
Okay, cool.
And did you find anything out about the mini park fence?
What's that?
Did you find anything out about the mini park fence?
I totally forgot about it.
That's all?
All right.
It's not a...
Here you are.
Sure, yeah, I, I drive past it every time.
I drive past it every day.
You're reading about twenty other things.
Yeah.
Oh, that, like, one rail.
Yeah.
It needs a few rails.
Yeah.
We're actually putting a fence up, uh, a rail fence where the community cleanup area was. We're gonna try and clean that up a little bit and put a fence and a gate there, just a rail fence, so. When we do that, we'll make sure we get a few extra rails and put them up over there.
Cool, thank you. Thanks, Mike. I was stealing my kid's chips.
Someone laid something on your chair.
Somebody might sit back in that chair. It's just, it's just...
Steve, though, you got anything else for any folk towns?
Do you have anything? Or, no, okay. Um, of course, the, well, there's a community garage sale around the community. It's not a holistic community garage sale, but folks are, are doing garage sales all over the community on Saturday, including the Lions Club rubbish sale at the Scout Hall. Uh, so if you're out and about, check out the Chodo Online Yard Sale. There's all sorts of information. I think a few of them put ads in with Melody too.
When is the last day to donate for the Lions Club?
If you call Sherwin Smith Saturday morning, he'll probably pick it up. Um, and the Two Medicine Dinosaur Center out in Bynum asked me to announce that they're selling rifle tickets for gun rifles.
Three guns.
Three guns.
Three guns, three nice guns. A Creedmoor and Kimber. I don't remember what the shot...
That's okay, Julie.
She said she...
I have, I have nothing.
What?
You said she didn't have anything?
No, I'm good. You guys have encouraged me enough. No, that's fine. I forget, forget.
Stuart, um, I don't have anything. Jill?
So, um, you guys got, I saw there was an email that went out about this highway meeting.
Mm-hmm.
Um, what's the fellow's name?
Oh, yeah. Oh, yeah, the, for the...
Stop this.
Well, no.
Yeah, it's, it's here.
Yeah.
It's in Chodo, the meeting, the highway.
Yeah, and it's for the Main Street project?
No.
It's for the North project.
So that's, that, it's actually...
That was for the North project.
Well, so they do a meeting every six months. It just happens to be in Chodo this time around.
Oh.
So that's something we learned on Wednesday at our training.
Next...
And, um...
We didn't even know they existed.
Yeah, we didn't know they existed. Until we went to that meeting. Wendy, Wendy Judich did, is adding us to that list, sir, so that we get notified when and where they are.
So, I have meetings though, I think. I think that there's the one that's for the...
Right, there's one for the North project and then there's...
Just a meeting that they actually have every six months and we didn't know existed.
Yeah, the general, how's it going meeting?
What day is that?
Week that.
Okay.
September twelfth, I think.
So the fellow had called me...
September twelfth, I think.
And he was like...
It's like months and months away.
Yeah.
Not, I thought it was this month.
No.
Yeah, twenty-sixth.
Okay, the one for the North project is. But the one that we're talking about, the one we learned about last week is September.
Oh, was it September?
Yes. Yeah, they just had it. She told us they just had it.
Yeah.
Where is it at?
The Y.
We're talking about, we're talking about a couple of...
We're talking about...
This one was, isn't, wasn't this one the BNSF one we were talking about?
No.
I'm not exactly sure which one. I thought the one that's every six months was the BNSF one.
Uh-uh.
No, it's State Highway.
Okay, gotcha.
Yeah.
This is...
And that one's in June.
There's one for the highway project that's in June.
Mm-hmm.
Okay. So he called, I, I think his, I don't know if my name's top of the list, but he was like telling me all this information. And I'm like, you, you need to contact the city office. So I gave him, you know, told him to talk to you or Tom.
Yeah.
And so then an email came out. I thought, he, he sent an email, but he sent it out to all of us.
Yeah.
Yeah, and, and so I thought he was talking about the Main Street project, so I was like...
No, that's June twenty-fourth. Yep.
Okay.
Open House Chodo North Project of Ruby Highway Eighty-Nine.
Okay, okay.
Yeah, that's the one.
That's the one.
You're writing his picture.
Yeah.
All right, so that was, yeah, I just confused on that and thought it was about the Main Street project that we're out of. Okay.
Do you know what time it is?
Four P.M.
Four P.M., okay.
And where is it?
I think it was at the library?
Yes, it's at the library. I'm sharing it to the campus webpage.
We can add in the Sweet Pea Room, those are us.
Okay, sorry. Um, and then this weekend, there's a yoga festival in Chodo, first annual.
Yeah.
Um...
It sounds like it's gonna be like a lot of presenters and stuff.
Yeah, um, I think it's a neat event that goes in, I can't say what it's...
Those have this...
Um, it's pretty fun with some other local folks, but, um, it sounds like there's, she got exceeded her expectations for the participation in the event. So that'll be kinda cool, inviting people to town.
Next week is the chiropractors convention here as well afterwards.
Is it really?
No, I'm just kidding. If I did yoga, I'd be at the chiropractor, that's all I say.
Hey, so I think, so...
Uh, the only thing I have was the, the training that went to was Stuart and Jody last year, very good training, uh, one day training, Dan Clark. I was part of the orchestration committee, I think, putting it on, uh, with several other folks. And then I think at the end, it was kind of this open question and answer, which I thought was very good. Uh, but one of the issues that I wa, I wanted to plan on addressing with the council was, uh, you know, we have different properties that I think we, we all would wanna see improved. Um, and so we talked to the attorney for MMIA, is that right, Jody?
Mm-hmm.
And she kinda said, you know...
No, for, um, please.
For the, if you give this, you know, this, if it's this and this and this, and then you apply it to everyone, you can go after that, you know? 'Cause I think, like I said, there are properties we all see in town that we'd like to, to have improved and, and willing to work with people who are pretty close. And so that's just something that kinda came on my radar. Um, thanks for Jody, Jody for inviting me to that training. But that's something that, that I wanna address this summer, and so I'll work with Jody to maybe get something together, 'cause I'd like to kinda pursue that.
On that note, um, so in the context of what Mary Sexton was talking about in our last meeting, Eric, I mean, part of what their CPG loan grant program was, improving property on this, yeah, so.
And so I think in part of that, I'd come to the port of...
Mm-hmm, yes, there's up to...
Uh, other than that, I don't think I have anything else. Um, anyway, two separate issues, both of them surrounding what I just said, so, not that's it.
It'd be nice to be able to get people to clean up, spruce up a little bit, take a little bit of pride in their property.
Well, I think the other aspect that the attorney talked about was a public health hazard. So, you know, for instance, she, the, the example she gave was you have a bunch of appliances there, that's, you know, a five-year-old kid could go get stuck in a fridge or whatever, and then you've got a public health issue, so.
Well, and they were actually talking about any property that they had to deal with.
They had to deal with. And then, so I, I hope there's not a day where we have to deal with it, but I'm gonna pursue that as much as I thought we can to say, hey, this is a, a public health hazard, it needs to be taken care of or we take care of it, so. That's all I got.
We'll put you in charge of it. Well, you've taken several different runs at this.
Yeah, I hear you.
It's been a, it's been a real thing that you're picking on me.
Yeah, I understand. And that's why I think if we, we have, you know, a list of criteria and then apply that to everyone that meets that criteria, then it's not a you're picking on me, it's a, this is the list.
Well, the other thing you said is, you know, you, you have ordinances in place and if they haven't been enforced for thirty years, you need to either look at the enforcement or do you get rid of it?
Yeah.
And, and if you're gonna enforce them, then you need to let people know, hey, we're gonna start enforcing this and give them the chance to, to rectify before it becomes a problem.
Yeah, and I don't foresee, I mean, I, I foresee it being that, hey, we're here to work with you.
Yeah, I also...
Your neighbors are calling us, people around town are calling us about your property, we wanna see it improved. And I know you do too, so let us help you.
Yeah, and we definitely know that, 'cause we've got lots of lawnmower calls the last two days.
I bet, yeah.
And Tom and Becky, Becky's the one we're working on now, wasn't she?
She's right now working on that one too.
Sending letters.
She's touring, that's what I know.
Yeah. Uh, for me, I just wanna thank the crew, Mike especially, for all the work he done with the flooding, watching the flood between him and I. We, we, we run around and looked at a lot of different things and kinda, the only thing we ever did, we did pull a cobra down Foster Road. It helped alleviate some, I think, just kept a real close eye on everything. Uh, Mike didn't tell you, we just brought a new employee on.
Is that a replacement?
Yeah.
Actually, gotcha.
Charlie's gonna be tired.
Yeah, phasing in and out.
So who's your new employer?
Kevin Kovach, we had two, and Tom Meyer, that's the third, yeah.
We've had one, one position that's been...
We ran a position two years ago.
Two years ago.
Didn't fill it, so. Had two really good applicants, so, uh, we filled the position we didn't fill two years ago and the position that told us.
So you only had two applicants with the dog?
No.
No, no, we just had, we had two.
We had three really good applicants, but we had...
Yeah.
You only had one position?
We, we, we had really good, uh, people apply for the job.
That's good, that's good to hear.
The one other one we'd have liked to seen on board, doesn't matter, he said he wasn't working the fifteen-minute on-call criteria. But now that's been going good for everything that I know of, we've been doing fine.
All right. You can call him.
Okay, I guess I didn't read, run over the zoning report to Judy, Julia Pamela in the garage. These are the applications we got. Head bump gardener, a deck, Scott Hatcock, a fence, Connie Smith, a deck, can stare away. And Chad Boll finally put one in on the nursing home. We got that. Okay, public comment. Rich?
Uh, just wanna say that my first roadkill cruise-in is next Wednesday night, six o'clock at the Ice Cream Parlor. Uh, and I also would like to say it went to the talent show at the, at the Chodo Elementary. And we've got some very talented kids coming up in this community. Two of them's fathers are right here. Everything's also looking good, thank you. I'm gonna talk at their car show, all the gear has been...
Anybody else? Mel?
She got in town for two days this weekend, so don't let any news happen.
No, nothing's gonna happen. It's be quiet.
You'll see it on Instagram or Twitter.
Facebook Live.
Well, what a public comment.
Move to adjourn.
Move to adjourn, we are adjourned. Thanks, Austin.
Yeah?
Thank you, Austin.
Thanks, Austin.
We hate you a lot.
No problem.